Can you just... ...this sides? Thank you. Yeah, praise the Lord, God bless you all.
Katarikusthatram devan ungalavirni aswadi parag.
Are we happy this evening? Are we happy this evening?
Indha maalivellu santhosamayirukkunna.
Amen. I'm so glad to see your wonderful faces.
Unguludiyan anbanu muganglai paarpadale migundamagilchi.
Except my face, I'm very much tired, very.
Ennuudiyam mugathaita varainindhal naan sathu sorvaayirukkunna.
But anyhow, when I see your faces.
Ungal muganglai paarukkumbothu migundasanthos.
I feel encouraged.
Naan adhimay uchaapadutha parugirunna.
God bless you all.
Devan ungaloviru aswadi parag.
Yeah, I would like to thank the Lord.
Naan kattarikka nandisalutha virumbukunna.
He has given me this privilege to serve him.
Avare avasevi padarannduslaakittukaaga nandisaluthu.
And through the scriptures of his people.
Avarudiyaa devanudiyajanathin prajnuthirkaaga.
Also, I'm very happy for my third son. I will put him the first son.
Naan ennuudiyam mundaadu manuka santhosapadugirunna.
Brother Ben from...
Mudaladhu maganagaavara ninnuukurugirunna.
God bless you.
Sagor benni telugana avrilandu vandirukkunna.
Even he is tired.
Avarunkoada migun sorvaayirparinndu ninikirunna.
But God bless you all.
Devan ungaloviru aswadi parag.
God bless all of you. Can you just come a little bit... Brother Andrew.
Sattu oru oru leenigun munnukorugirirukkunna.
Come, come in the front line. Fill the gap, fill the gap because outside some of them they have...
Velile janangal intukondirukkunna. Galiyarka chair munnoaki varumariyakeedu.
Come quickly. Even sisters, sisters can just take that occupy this first.
Munbaaga nalaindu chair ikkayaan sagorikka unbaaga vandhamerunna.
Amen. Can you come? All chairs, all empty chairs.
Munbaaga galiyarkum ellachella nar kaaligilu ningal occupiedaninga.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Now all this middle part is okay anyhow, I don't want to kill the time. God bless all of you.
Bohavannu ungaloviru aswadi parag.
And also I have taken another supporter.
Innoraadra valaruyu naan peechirukkunna.
But morning also brother did a wonderful job, brother James.
Kaalailupasa James armiyana mulimerpu seida.
But I know he's very, very tired.
Avarunkoada armigun sorvindirkararindu naan arinikirunna.
And even so I wanted to just give him rest.
Avar kisidu vaivukodukka naan vanchikunna.
So, oh this morning, I, I, this afternoon I was very much blessed.
Indha madhyana velile naan adhimay aswadi kapattin.
And I, I think that brother is not come.
Anthe pastor Ruben paravillanndu ninikirunna mandukondirukkunna.
And I want to tell you, I was very much blessed by that, in that service.
Anthe madhyana aradhale naan adhimay aswadi kapattin. Amandukondungu please.
And really I was thinking about myself.
Naan enne kuritha avidamay sindhitukondirundhi.
All everywhere people they sing that, think that pastor shinde, pastor shinde. Oh very good preacher.
Ellam manidharugulum apostles shinde sirundha prasangi, sirundha prasingiendu pesukrarangal.
They say but I know who am I.
Anal enukuthaan naan yarindu teri.
But this afternoon it was a wonderful message.
Endakimadhyanathla armiyana or chaidiyanam kettum.
Since long time has brother Ruben told you that he was fifteen years old. That time he met me.
I'm sorry. Avare asonnaya andhavisiyum menakisrapagaandhade. Padinayindu vaiidu siruvanaga avare ennay sandittharindu sonnaraalava.
And after that one we missed and so many, after so many years again I met him.
Ay parunga avidamay avare anega anega varudangalukupirake. Meendu avare sandikumadhyana vaipukkadi.
And some of the disagreement were there.
Engal kulaisilla karuthu varpaadugalirundhade.
And he was just doing, he, he told that he was arguing with me.
Avare sonnar naan ungalodin naan vaadampannavirumbukunna.
But I'm so thankful to the Lord.
Naan kattarikka nandisaluthigirunna.
That God brought him to the right path.
Devan sariyana edathirke, sariyana sthanathirke devan, pastor Rubenakondu.
It is my prayer that God may bless him and make use of him for his kingdom, for his...
Ennuudiyajabam aanadu pasarubanavilla devan aswati innum anegarukuprajnupaduthuvaraga.
Anytime whenever I was just speaking about South India, I was thinking about Ruben.
Naan epotha ellam naan indhatanindiyake kuriuthu pesukrarano. Apotha ellam pasarubanake kuriuthu pesukrarano.
I, I don't understand.
Naan adhai puyindukolamudiyavillu.
But now I can understand a little bit, just yes, I'm so happy.
Ipothu naan sathu puyindukolirugana arkkaga magilchi.
What a wonderful message he preached.
Armiyana or chaidi avar madhyana koduthaaralava.
Then I, I was thinking about why this South India they are interested in a foreign country preacher.
Adhanal than enukuthariyadhe. Tenindhirgal yen velinatuprasingigila virumbukrarangal.
Every time they will be just looking who is coming from abroad.
Epothumay avargays, dhurathilandu velithasthundu yarvarukraragay endu parparagay.
But I want to tell you the truth.
Naan unmay sallavirumbukunna.
We don't understand who we are.
Naam yarindre naan puyindukolvadillai.
We must understand God has just chosen us also.
Devan namayum terindukondirukkara.
God may bless this foreigners Americans.
Velilindu varugara velinatavara devan aswadi kila.
I, I am not against of anyone.
Avaregal yarai kuriuthum edhupanakilai.
But many times.
Anega nerangalil.
We Indians think that we Indians are nothing.
Nam Indiansen annanikiruna namonathukon prajnulalannikirunna.
Oh if somebody is coming from abroad.
Velinatlanthu or prasingi varumbodhi.
All people they will make advertisement and gag and collect the money and big program and everything.
Ellarun periyavilambagunla ayarpatti, arimavulaisseidhe, apriyantakutathirkaal sarparagay.
But what about the Indians?
Anal Indianskali kuriuthenne.
Brother Brian, I'm told these Americans you don't try to go to India and try to preach them because they got better preacher.
Avare namdeetirka darsi ennesonarindha. Americanle ningal Indiaavukichandri, Indianskali prasingika mayuchikaadhirukkay. Indiaavil idheyvita sirundha prasingikalirukkara.
There is nothing to boast, nothing to boast.
Idhe perumiyay pesukudiyavarka.
I would, I make my trip here and there in another country.
Naan anega, naan anega velinadukalukupparu.
I've seen so many preachers, big rain, big.
A velinatla periyapairgalakonna prasingigala naan santhitthu.
But I will, but I will tell you brother Brian's vision was true.
Anal naan sallugirunna namdeetirka darsi sonnadu unmay.
Brother Brian was, he saw the vision.
Namdeetirka darsi edhirkalathait parthu.
Probably are acquainted with that vision.
Ningal adhi kuritha chaidi ningal arindurupi.
And there was a big tray and big tray was full of the good food.
Or paathinuvor periyavor thattila anega nalla palangal vaikappattirundhade.
And then, white birds came. White birds came.
Anga velai paravigal vendhade.
Snow white.
Remba venvenpaniyipanradhunna.
And they sat on the table where the big tray of, of full of food was.
Anga thattila palangal vaikappattinda meja inmeethu, andh paravigal amarundhade.
And these white birds they were just moving around that food.
Anthe velai paravigal apriyaga andh palangal suchivandhade.
Going that way, going this way, coming.
Andh thattai sutti 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 vandhade.
And they were trying to just take little bit with a big and they were trying to eat.
Andh nalla palangalai alugigala koti tinna mayuchitade.
They were trying here, trying to eat that one.
Inge konjokoti tinna mayuchikrada, anga konjokoti tinna mayuchikrada.
But they did not eat.
Analade avigal unnavillai.
And in the vision they flew away.
Eh konjanarathil avigal parundupoyinna.
And after that one.
Adharke pinbe.
Here comes the blackbirds.
Adhalinupathina karupu paravigal.
When they saw that food.
Andh palangai thattai pathupadu.
From all direction they started eating and within few meters they consume and they...
Andh karupu paravigal ellathisailandhanda palangal koti tinni konjanarathilandhanda palangal gaali panidhutu.
And brother Brian said, Lord, what is this vision?
Apa tirka darsi keta devane, indhadarsutathikuriuthenne.
What is this, this food in the tray?
Andh thattilandhavunavi enne.
He said, this is that message, this was a entire message.
Andh thattilandhavala varadu allai indh chaidi.
And brother Brian said, oh, thank you Jesus, thank you Jesus.
Apa tirka darsi sonna devane amukun nandhi.
I said, Lord, but what are these white birds?
Apriyala andavirande vela paravigal enne.
Lord said that these are your white people.
Idhe vandhe unudiyavellai, velai manidharugal, velai varukka.
They wouldn't take this message.
Andh velai manidharugal, Americaargal, Iropiaargal, indh chaidi arukumavilaga.
Brother Brian felt very sorry in his heart.
Avare solumbodhi tanirdayathila pranna migun varthapatta.
Because they did not eat this message.
Enindhal avargal indh chaidi unnavillai.
And they flew away.
Avargal parundupoyivittaraga.
And these blackbirds came and started eating and consume all and everything.
Anal engendhav karupu paravigal vandhe indh, indh palathai muludumaytinnde.
So he said.
Devan sonnar.
These white birds are Americans and white people. They will not take this message.
Indh velai paravigal, Iropiaargal, Americaargal, velaiyargal.
But this message will go to Africa and India.
Anal indh chaidi Afrikaavukum, Indiaavukum pogum.
So I want to tell you, encourage you.
Naan ungalu uchaapaduthavirumbukunna.
We got the good preachers.
Nam nadivillai nalla prasingikal undi.
We got the good preachers.
Nalla prasigal undi.
Only the thing we don't speak of high vocabulary that English.
Namdeem mathile erkakudiarkal, nalla sirundha angilam, angila ilakkunam illamalirukka.
So our preachers they can preach in Telugu, Tamil, Kannada, no problem.
Naan petrukra prasingal Tamil talenge, hindi, malayalamendurukkunna.
This morning, this afternoon I was very much blessed.
Indh madhyanathla naan adhimay aswadi kapattin.
Amen.
Amen.
But all these false doctrine they, they, it comes from abroad.
Anal ellakallu upadeshangalum velinatilindu varugradhe.
In a first convention in Madras.
Chennailla mudaladhu oru convention.
That was first India's anytime convention.
Indiaavil nadipattam mudaladhu kalisikala chaidi kootam.
And I was the main speaker.
Naan than andh adhilavur mukkiyapetchala.
Doctor Jacob was that time.
Doctor S C Jacob.
But I, but I told that Madras is the wholesale market of all false teaching.
Naan sonnen ellakallu upadeshamum mulumiyavotamay kadakira sandai Chennai maanagaramindusal.
Said they are importer.
Avayalallam velinatilindhu vargal irakkumadi saigiraga.
And from there they distribute that one.
And Chennailla avigal irakkumadi panni, matta tamulnatin bagangalkavarga, anupukraragay.
But we have to defend and we have to stand for this truth.
Anal naan indh chaidi kaaga ninre, thchaidi kaaga yuttampannavedhi.
Now so many false doctors are creeping in this message.
Indh chaidi kulla anega kallu upadeshangal vandukondirukkunna.
But you have to stand for the world.
Anal naam devanudiyavartakaga nirkaavendum.
That is why prayer, Lord, just help our people.
Adhivay ennuudiyajabam devane, enjanangalukoodhavisayyum.
If we will not stand for the message.
Naam chaidi kaaga nirkaavittal.
Then this generation will be the last.
Idhi ellame elakapattupoyividum.
So that is the reason stand for the message firmly.
Indh sandathi kadeshaan nirkiradi, chaidi kaaga nirkaavendum.
Never to compromise, never to compromise.
Naam endevidathulum, thchaidi naam machavendhiyadhullai.
We have to take our preachers.
Naam namdeem edhirkalathait peechukolavendum.
And just give them the opportunity.
Namdeem sandhadikey andh vaipatharavendum.
And help them, stand with them, pray for them.
Andh sandhadi indh chaidilani paderukke jepikavum udavisayumavendum.
I believe that it will be a great blessing for all of us.
Naal inamellaarukume, thchaidi or magathana aswadi vadhumayirukku.
Amen. Now, we are getting late, we will just start our message.
Naam sattuneera thamdamaagradhe, amneeraakachaidi kullaavu.
This morning I had brought so many ten kilo books.
Naan indh kaalivelile pattkilo chaidiputangal konduvandhi.
But I was thinking that want to give to, give it to them.
Naan indh, indh pillagalkenne taravendumindusindithen.
It was a ten kilo.
Adu varpattkilo putthangal.
Then I was thinking, no, 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 just let me see their appetite, spiritual appetite.
Anan yoostha mudaladhu, avga evidamana avikuriyah, oru tanmai ulavala irukka naan pakaranen.
But when I saw that you are, you are having a good spiritual appetite.
Apa naa pathu ungalkulla nalla or avikuriyapasi unnum tanmai irupadainna.
So then I thought that okay, it's alright to preach the message to them.
Apriyana ungalke nalla or balamana or chaidiya prasingikunna namisvas.
Amen. Brother Ruben taken a wonderful message.
Pastor Ruben armiyana chaidi kodutha.
If I will just put something else then it will not be just like a, there will be not be continuity.
Ey naan variyadhyum, sa naange solumbodhi, adhan thodarchi illamal payividum.
But we will just continue that subject.
Adhe, apesaapattadhe, andh, andh pagidhena matthodarlal.
I was thinking brother Ruben is going to preach all my messages, I think that.
Naan enne yoostanindha, pastor Ruben, naan kondvanthu ellachaidiyuprasingithuviduvaro, endu ninaithen.
Then what I will preach.
Apa na ennapanai pesamudiyunndu ninaithen.
Because these people they think that Stephen Shinde is a big speaker.
Ellaro mumbaiindu vandhastipansinnde, periyaprasingin ninikiranga.
But doesn't matter whether speaker is a big or small one.
Prasangi siriyavuno periyavuno enbadhalai.
Only there will be little different in the voice.
Avarudiyaa, avarudisathathila vitthasamiruklam.
But no change, the same essence.
Vairindha maatsamillai, aduthan chaidi.
God bless all of you.
Devan ungaloviru aswadi parag.
We will, we will stand up and offer data. And if you like to just, you pray while just listening this one.
Naam oru saikuda yelindunindu devanudiyavathukimadhipukoduppo.
We will open our Bible in a Revelation chapter ten.
Velipathanavisesham pathamadigarthukarundavarlal.
And you don't get tired with this Revelation ten.
Indh velipathanaputthayesya ungalukubuaradikadhe.
Amen, amen. That just you know thus, all the portion one to seven by heart.
Indh pathamadigara onju mudaliyeli vasunngalai, hamillar manadil vaithiruppo.
Here we know that one of the mighty angel is just coming from heaven with the open book in his hand.
Inge parkurav or balamulla tuudan, vaanathilindho tirundhaputthathai kondu eringinannandu parkurav.
And he was giving that book to the prophet Seventh Angel.
Anga parkura avan andh putthathathai, ellam tuudanudiyakaratla kodukran.
And he said that he was told that take it and eat it.
Idhavangi pusiyandu solugran.
Because that is the most important revelation in the whole Bible.
Indh vedathullai ellam magathana velipadugalidhu or mukkiyavellipadu.
I will read only Seventh verse to save my time.
Naan namdeem nairatham ichapadutha, ellam vasunthathai vasstham maathram vasikalam.
Or maybe before six and seven.
Ariyel vasikalam.
And there he, that ages swear by him and that live it forever and ever. Who created heavens and the things that there are in and the earth and the things that therein are. And the sea and the things which are therein that there should be time no longer. But in the days of the voice of the angel, the when he shall begin to sound, the mystery of God should be finished. As he had declared to his servants the prophets.
Amen. Ini kaalam selladhe, analum devan tamdeem ulya kararakie, tirka darsigalkusu viseshamay arvitabadi. Ellam tuudanudiyasathathin naarkalile, avan ekkala moodapograpodhi, deva ragasium niraveeruminthu. Vaanathiyum adhilullavigilu, bhoomiyayyum adhilullavigilu, samuthrathiyadhilullavigilu sushithavaru. Sadakalingalu uyiroodirukkunnu oru manavarmel, anaituthu chunnan.
Amen, shall we pray?
Nam chepikalam.
Father God, this evening we pray that you will just bless us and speak with the heart, Lord Jesus Christ. We have read your word, Lord Jesus Christ, and it is for our age, for us, Lord. We pray that we will say you are a righting, a Lord, reveal your word for us, Lord. Though you have just brought this revelation through your prophet, but we need, Lord Jesus Christ, your spirit to understand this thing. Help me, help your servants and all the brothers and sisters, those who are on the way, bring them safe. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
You may be seated.
Putkarla.
Now, brother had just spoken about the sorrows in the time. Afternoon.
Paathu madhyana idhay kuriuthesidhada, pasarubanavil pesinargal.
And we know that every time I, I carry this, even brother know that I was carrying this message.
Naan ovvar, ovvar edathilindh chaidiputthathai naan kondundandirukkunna.
He spoke about the crisis, the mystery of God revealed, it was in my, I was carrying.
Naan kistu devanudiyavaramaragasithin velipathanaputthathai varitirukkunna.
He was speaking about the message called souls in the prison, it was with me in my back.
Kaavilila athumakalindral sonnara, andhaputthayanidhathirukkunna.
So it is not a coincidence.
Idhi vandhe yarkyanavishyamthan.
So praise the Lord for that one.
Kattarikka nandisaluthalam.
We are just receiving from the same God.
Naangal irvarume, namellaarume, oray devanithundupetukolukku.
That the revelation cannot be changed.
Velipadu machamudiyadhe.
Because once God had just given this revelation.
Devan or velipadakoduthapinbe.
Wherever it may be.
Adh engayirukkunna.
It cannot change.
Adh maarumudiyadhe.
So praise the Lord for this wonderful message.
Indh armiyana chaidi kaaga nandisaluthuvar.
I told many, many places, even abroad also.
Naan, naan, velinatla kodathu solirukkunna.
This is the most misunderstood message throughout the world.
Indh ulaga muludillan thavarai purundukollapattu oru chaidi undhade, ayamir, idhuvaa, kadeshikalathin adayalamindu chaidi.
The most misunderstood message.
Idh adhimay thavarai purundukollapattu chaidi.
Even more misunderstood than seven seals.
Yel muttraygalai parkilum, indh chaidi adhimay thavarai pankundukor.
But this message is so wonderful message.
Anal idhi unmayli thalaisirundha or chaidi.
It adverses over things.
Adh anega karingalai velipadithu.
But only we must have that spirit to catch that one.
Andh aviay peechirundhalantavellipadakpeechukkunna.
Few things we will just see that one. Few things we will be seeing.
Naam sorisilla karingalai nama, parukka.
Here we know that Revelation ten.
Naam velipathanavisesham pathil parkurav.
The mighty angel is just coming.
Andh balabulla tuudanirangi varukkunna.
And bringing the open book in his hand.
Avar andh tirundhaputthathai kailukondu varugara.
Because we know that this book is for the bride of Christ.
Indhaputthagam aanadhi, Kristobin manavatikaaga.
It is for her.
Kristobin manavatikaakondu varupadigal.
That is her book.
Adh namdeem putthagam.
So praise the Lord for that book also.
Andhaputthathukaaga nandisaluthuvar.
For the, praise the Lord for the remember also.
Andh, andh meetpar kaaga nandisaluthuvar.
He paid the price and took that book and brought it for your baby.
Avar namakana kriyathai saluthi, andhaputthathathai vangi, adhakoduthanupukira.
So we know that now, where was that book first? Where was that book?
Apriyana indhaputthagam, unbaage engirundhade.
We can see that book was in the right hand of God, where he was sitting over there.
Singasnatilme namandirdavaria, valathupurathile, andhaputthagam vaikappattirundhade.
But here in Revelation there it is coming down.
Anal anga velipathanavisesham pathamadigathle, andhaputthagam keela varugradhe.
But still many times we don't understand what is that book.
Anal andhaputthagam enne endre, anega nerangalil nam arindukollavamudiyavillu.
We call that book the book of redemption.
Andhaputthathirke meetpinputthagamindru paya.
We call that book as a book of title deed.
Adh, adh naavurimay pathratin putthagamindu solla.
We call it the Lamb's Book of Life.
Adh aattukuttiyanavrin jeevapusamindu solla.
But still I am not satisfied with that answer.
Anal andhapadilinna naan thirupthiagaavillai.
Finally, I want to know that what is that book of redemption?
Naan kadeshaaga andhapmeetpinputthagam ennevendu ariyavirumbukunna.
What is that title deed?
Andh urimay pathramenne.
What is that book of redemption?
Andhapmeetpinputthagam enne.
We know that professor, what is coming over here is a book of Revelation ten.
Anga tirka solugrar, velipathanavisesham pathilla varugrar andhaputthagam.
If we want to know what is that one.
Andhaputthagam ennevendu ariyavendum.
Which is coming in Revelation ten.
Andh velipathanavisesham varugar putthagam.
You have to go back from where it is coming.
Adh engirundhavandhada angesalavendum.
So here we can see it was in the right hand of God.
Idh velipathanavisesham aindhaadigathle, singasnatilamandhendavarkittu.
But before that where it was?
Adharke unbaagandhaputthagengirunchu.
It was in the garden of Eden.
Adh yaden thottathirundhade?
God the father had given that book to the, to his son.
Avar pitavakiyadhi devan, adhitan kumar nagi adhamuk kodutha.
That was given to Adam.
Adh adhamuk kodukapattade.
In the message called bridge.
Adh pilavengri chaidi la.
Brother Brian said, Adam lost it.
Thirka solugrar, kodukapattaputthathathai adham ilandhan.
Adam lost that book.
Adham andhaputthathathai ilandhan.
And since that he had couldn't take that one.
Adh meendav avanala thirmi edukamudiyavillai.
And suddenly God came like a thunderbolt and picked up that book.
Devan idhi mulakathilla vandhe, andhaputthathathai meendu eruthupoyivitta.
And he just holding that book in his hand.
Adh tanudiyavallathikaratthila varavai thirundhar devan.
But we know that God is waiting for that kinsma dittibar.
Adh devan andhapmeetpar kaaga wait, adh kaathukondirundhi.
God doesn't want that book.
Devanuka andhaputthagam thavai illai.
God had given that book to the son.
Devan adhitan kumarneekuthanduvittaa.
That was to Adam.
Adh adhamuk.
And from Adam to his children.
Adhamilindhavundiyasandhadikey.
It was your book and my book.
Idhi unputthagam, yenputthagam.
When God gives something.
Devan or putthathathai tarumbodhi.
If your father gives you motor car.
Oh ungalatagapan or car kodutha.
Then he must give the right paper also.
Adharke anasariyana or paperan tharunu.
Otherwise police will catch you, kick you.
Elainda police puiduthu ungalai, ulago odipparagay.
You have to show the title.
Andhap caripidikumbothi, RC bookakathun.
If the title is in your, in your hand.
Anta urimay pathram unidhathil irundha.
Even if that car is stolen, you can bring that one.
Andhap car tholakapattala ni thedi kandupidikalam.
So we know that title deed was lost by Adam.
Anal indhapurimay pathram, adhamal yadenil erukapattade.
It, it was given by God the father.
Adh pitavakiyadhi devanala avun kodukapattade.
By that title.
Andhapurimay pathrathathai koduthu.
He said, you control everything.
Yi, ni ellavachium ni aalgaisaila.
Subdue everything under your control.
Ellavachium unakke keelpadutallam.
Because he had a right.
Enindhal avun kodurimay irundhade.
He had a power to speak to the mountain.[1518.60]
Avan, malakalai pathipessum, vallamai petta.
Power to speak to the storms.
Avan, andh puyalai pathipessum, vallamai petta.
Power to speak to the fishes.
Anga, mingalai pathipessum, vallamai petta.
But when he lost that one.
Avan andh urimai patthatay ilandhan.
He lost everything.
Avan ellavachium ilandhan.
He lost his life.
Avan tan jeevanay ilandhan.
He lost his kingdom.
Avan tan rajyathay ilandhan.
He lost his power.
Avan vallamai ilandhan.
And he become a powerless and beggar.
Avan vallamai athrapichai karunagi pona.
Doesn't matter, he lost it.
Avan, avanike, adhi ilandhadi periyavor porutha tharila.
First Adam lost it, his generation lost it.
Avan, mudaladha adam ilandhan, avan sandadhi ilandhadi.
And because that first Adam.
Andh mudaladha adam.
He brought us out of the paradise.
Andh mundina adam, namai paradhisukundu veliakonduvaru.
But here comes the second Adam.
Anel, rendhamadha.
To take us back to the garden of.
Namai meendu paradhisukkakondupogira.
He comes and paid the price to take us back to our inheritance.
Thirumbi paradhisukkakonduchella, salathavendriyavilayavarsalathina.
So all glory has to go to the Lord Jesus.
Ellame, yesukusukkumagimaisalathavendru.
Why God had just taken that book?
Devan, yenandh putthagatay eruthukundha.
It is very, very important.
Adhi, rambamukhyam.
We know that, all the angelic beings were around that one.
Ella, ellad devatuthu dhalasuttiyundharagai.
They were not guarding God.
Devan, avargal yaarum paadukakiraya devamillai.
God doesn't want bodyguard.
Devanuka yaarum bodyguard tevai illa.
God is guarding everyone.
Enndala, devantan elladukpaadukap.
But all these scriptures and thousands of angels.
Indha ayilakannakana thutharagai.
Why they were guarding, what they were guarding?
Avargal yedainil, eday paadukathar.
Not the throne of God.
Devanudiyasingasnatil.
But they were guarding the book.
Enndala, avarga, indha putthagatay paaduk.
Because that is a title.
Enndala, adhi oru urimai puttharam.
Title deed to the earth.
Adhi, urimai patram.
God's children's title deed.
Idhi, devanudiyapillagalin urimai patram.
And God was holding that temporarily.
God, devan adhi tarkaliigamaga vaitthirunda.
He doesn't want it.
Avarganandh putthagand tevai illa.
But he is holding temporarily.
Adhi, tarkaliigamai vaitthirunda.
Until someone comes and takes that one.
Adhi, innorvar vandhi edukvaraiile, devan tarkaliigamai vaitthirunda.
Like a someone like a Boaz, someone like Boaz.
Adhi, indha boavasi poodanavaruva.
That Boaz paid the price and he took the title.
Anga, boavas, salathavendriyavitthokey salathii, andh urimaiyay ruthay petchirundha.
And he gave it to that, 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 that woman, Naomi.
Anga, andh urimai patthatay petchirun, Naomi karathla kodutha.
Boaz doesn't want it.
Boavaskat tevai illai.
He is a very kind person.
Avan migavum, yinimiyano varuva.
He paid the price.
Avan veliay salathina.
He took the title.
Avan andh urimaiyay petchirundhi.
And he gave it to her.
Adhi, Naomi kikodu.
Blessed be the name of the Lord's, second, second Boaz.
Rendhaadu boavaskaga nandri.
All glory has to go to him.
Devanuka magimaisalathavendru.
Then where that title deed was supposed to be kept?
Anga, andh urimai patram engay vaykappadavendru.
Your property paper, where do you put?
Ungaludi, sathupathram engay vaypinga.
You don't put it in house.
Umm, veeetikku veliayala, adhi poodamatiyil.
You cannot put here and there, in a window, on the door.
Anga, anga, general varathala vaykamatiyil.
Oh, you cannot put it, oh, this is my house, you cannot put it over there.
Yaaveedi, idhi, engavunala vayppan vachiduvingla patrathan.
You take that title from that room to this room, and from that one, go to inside room, and open the cupboard, and open the locker, and put it inside, where it's at.
Vasalindhu, ulle vandhi, ulle bedroomupoyi, bira tharundhi, a locker tharundhi, ulle vaypingillaiya?
Because this is very, very important.
Enna, adhi rambaramukhyam.
So total secret.
Adhi, rambaragasiaman oru edathla vaykappadavendru.
But we know that since it was a closed book.
Adhi, oru moodappadha putthavamai irundadi.
Sealed with seven seals.
Adhi, yel mudrakalai moodappadindadi.
Still, many of them, we don't know what is that book and what is inside of that.
Anega arka, andh putthagam enna endru, ulle enna arkanthu teriyavillai.
Many times, we think that, okay, that is a book of life, Lamb's Book of Life.
Anel, poduvailla ninnakiradi, aattukuttiyanavrin jeeva putthagam.
Then if it has been opened, what comes out?
Adhi, oru vela tirundhal, enna varu veliya?
If the book is open.
Andh putthagam tirakkappadhal.
What comes out?
Edu veliya varum.
So that is a wonderful thing to understand.
Adhi, purindukolavati sidandha kariyamai irukum.
And in this message, we will try.
Indha chediyalam adhu mayichipal.
To see few things.
Ensillakariyala.
Before going to that one.
Adhar kulakisalva, adhar unbaaga.
In this scripture, we know that in the seventh angel's time message.
Yelam, thuthunudiyanaartkalilam, chediinaartkalilam.
He said, the mystery of God should be finished.
Devanudiyel, ellaragasiam niraveeramint sonna.
The mystery of God.
Devanudiyaragasiam.
There is only one mystery.
Orayavaru marmantan, ragasiamtha undi.
There are so many mysteries.
Naraya ragasigal undi.
There are, in a brother Brian said, in a Scofield Bible.
Thirgaisolugira, Scofield vedagamathile.
There are so many mysteries that have been given.
Naraya ragasigal velipadappadirukke.
Near about twelve or eleven mysteries have been given.
Patthu, padinor, panirundu, ragasigal solappadirukke.
And the mystery of this one, the mystery of that one, the mystery of this one.
Idhay kuritha ragasiam, adhay kuritha ragasiam, avale kuritha ragasiam.
But brother Brian am telling, not all these mysteries.
Anel, thirgaisolra, idella ragasiam illai.
This seventh seal, maybe, seventh verse in Revelation ten.
Anga, velipathosesham patthamaadigatla, yelamasnatle.
He is not speaking about any other mysteries.
Avan, vairu, ragasigalakurithallam pesavillai.
If you like to see that one, you can go and read in your sorrows is the time.
Ungalken nairamirkumbadhi, ingal poyadhey vasithuparigal.
He has given eleven mysteries.
Avan, padinore chedi, padinor ragasigalakurithirukka.
But brother Brian said, he is not speaking about these mysteries.
Anel, indha solappadha, padinore ragasigalakurithallai.
Revelation ten seven is not speaking all the other mysteries.
Velipathosesham patthi yel, indharagasigalakurithallam pesal.
He is not speaking about the mystery of resurrection.
Adhi, veeitaladhalin ragasiyathay kurithu pesal.
Not speaking the mystery of the body change.
Andh, sarina urumartathay kuritha ragasiam allai.
Let us speak about the mystery of the Antichrist.
Andhikristvay kuritha ragasiam allai.
But he said, the mystery of God.
Anel, devanay kurithantha ragasiam.
Not the mystery of Antichrist, six, six.
Andh, andhikristvaagya, arnuthi aruthara kuritha ragasiam.
This is the mystery of God.
Idhi, devanay kurithantha ragasiam.
In this book.
Indha putthagam.
There is no place for the devil.
Daangasataanukidamillai.
Many people, many people, they misunderstand.
Anegar thandu tavarai purindukolugira.
When the seventh seal, book was sealed with a seven seal, and first one was, open the white horse, the Antichrist came.
Anga, parkaram, anega tavarai purindukolugiragai, andh putthagatay sutti, yel mudrakalilirukke, mudaladha mudrakalay tharundha unna, apriyay velipadigirathendru.
And the second seal was open, the red horse came.
Adhi, rendhaadu mudrakalay uritha badhi, sevupukudray vanchi.
Then the black horse and the pale horse, the Antichrist.
Perakkarupukudray, perakpattingina mangina kurudray, perakandhikristvadhan ninakir.
How that devil can be in that Lamb's Book of Life?
Yappadi, andh, aattukuttiyan jeeva putthathathasataan irukamudiyam?
Will God just seal them and he will protect them?
No. Adhar kulak pisasai vaittha, devan apriyav mudrakitaada paadukapar.
So that is the outside mystery of the seal.
Adhi, andh ragasithukveliyana kariyam.
What is inside?
Ullayirindadi enna?
Brother sister, where is that, every time you see, what is sealed inside?
Eva, ovaramurayum, ulle ennemudrakappadindadi.
Where is that in the time of Roha?
Adhi, andh noavin kalathikurithada?
The believers were sealed inside, but the unbelievers were sealed outside.
Anga, noavin kalathile, visuvasi pelekullai, mudrakappadha, avisvasi pelekki veliyav mudrakappad.
In the land of Egypt.
Egyptile?
The door was just put, on the little, the blood was put over there, the believers were sealed inside, unbelievers were sealed outside.
Anga, cosin desathile, anga vasali nilakalmele, attam pousappadtabodhi, andh nilakalukullai irunda, visuvasi mudrakappadha, nilakalukveliyirundava, avisvasi mudrakappad.
The believers are sealed inside.
Visuvasi ulle mudrakappadigiran.
But the Antichrist is sealed outside.
Andhikristu veliyav mudrakappadigiran.
No, but we are so happy for this one.
Naam idhar kaga, naam, naam sandashapadigirum.
The mystery of God should be finished.
Devanudiyaragasiam niraveerapadigir.
Now, we know that, many of the time, we just morning, someone is telling that, they were in a oneless faith.
Naam, kalila pesukunna, naam, andh oruthuva visvasthalirukamintasanaaragai.
As brother Ruben told that, yes, the oneless people, they stopped me.
Adhi, sonnaliya, Rubenaya, namari naan, nan trichisandhrindabodhi, andh oruthuva, parakal nirthinaragai.
They take on the scooters and all the denabulation, they were moving here and there, all those, even non-Christian and Christian institutions, don't give this your place to a Bombay man, to for the meeting.
Andragi pathinana trichilla, idha vandha Mumbaiindhavandhirkana, andh manidhan, yunuka, niyungu edathakoodukadigendu, yen stabanakaragilum sutti sutti vandhargi.
So never this denabulation, they came together.
Yendh stabanamuy edhar kaa ondu kuda villai.
But they came because of me.
Anel, chindaya thortuvadar kaga ondu kudinaaragai.
I thought that at least it is good thing that they came together.
Idhar kaga, adhu orumunapattanglai, ne, naam sandashapadde.
And they announced in their church, don't entertain that man from Mumbai.
Mumbaiindhvarugiranda, manidhanai, umsabaili, etchadhirilandusonnaragai.
And then, some of the people, they said that we will go.
Anel, orsillasonnaragai illa, naam poy parkapogirum.
Early morning, seven o'clock, they started knocking at the door.
Yel manikalla, enudikadavi tattinaragai.
Brother Rajesh's house and brother Rosario's house, they knock.
Anga, brother Rosario vietile.
And the chedi. And we are better prepared to come into the name of Jesus.
Adhi, naam, naam, yesukusuvin, naavattharuthuvito.
Brothers, we know that we don't believe Trinity.
Adhi.
We don't believe Trinity.
Naam thirtuvathay nambodillai.
And we don't believe that one less also.
Naam oruthuvathay nambodillai.
We don't believe Jesus only doctrine.
Naam only Jesus chantrinay nambodillai.
That is wrong godhead.
Adhi, tavarana devatuvam.
That is not the mystery of God finishes over there.
Adhi, devanudiyaragasithin mudiva alla.
Brother Brian said, we don't believe Trinity.
Thirgaisonnar, naam thiruvathay, thirtuvathay.
God is not like a three finger.
Adhi, devan, moondu varal pola alla.
And God is not like a one finger.
Devan, oru, oru varal maru illa.
Now, where you will stand now?
Nige engani pirga.
This side is a three.
Ingamoonu.
This side is one.
Ingamone.
One finger, three finger.
Oru varal, moondu varal.
So where you will stand about your godhead?
Nige, unga devatuvathay kurithallai, egay pirga.
Even you can stand in between.
Nige, irandukon, naduula ikkamudiyal.
Our God is not two.
Enndala, devan irandu illa.
He is not three.
Avad, moondu illa.
And he is not a Jesus only.
Avar only Jesus illa.
But the mystery of God should be finished.
Apriya, analu, avari kuritha ragasiam niraveeravillai.
Brothers, this is a wonderful mystery.
Adhi, thannu, bagatana oru ragasiam.
Prophet brother Brian said.
Apriyathirgaisi chunnar.
In the churches and seals.
Anga, samikalalilu, mudrakalilu.
This mystery is the most sublime thing in the whole Bible.
Indha, vedatthi kuruvan, vedatthilu, migavum bagatana, oru maribukamana ragasiam.
The most important.
Analu, migavum mukhitu.
The most, the most sublime revelation.
Migavum orumiyana oru ragasiam.
In the whole Bible.
Moonu vedatthilu.
So what is that the mystery?
Andh, andh ragasiam enna?
Brothers, in the whole Bible, in chapter, we know that this is the one of God.
Naam idha, muriyana, devanuka vathayindu swasikro.
Brother Brian said.
Andh, kattu thirgaisonnar.
From Genesis to Revelation.
Sorry?
Glory. From Genesis to Revelation.
Adhi, amantindhadi velipathin visesham varai.
Ah, it is Jesus and Jesus and Jesus and Jesus.
Adhi, ellame, yesu, yesu, yesu.
All from Old Testament, from right from the first book, first chapter, first verse, deep Revelation, last chapter.
Ayya, thali, adhi amban, onnadigaram, onnavaasnatlunde, velipathin visesham varai, adhi yesu vaayirkradi.
And professor said.
Thirgaisonnar.
When you read your Bible.
Ni, ni, ni devanuka vathay vasikumbadhi.
Any place you open Bible.
Yendha vedatthi, yendha sakthi.
When you read your Bible.
Ni, unvedatthay vasikumbadhi.
And if you don't see Jesus.
Ni, vasikravasnatthi, yesu vai kanaavitta.
Professor said, read it again.
Adhi, read it again.
Read it again.
Read it again.
Until you see Jesus in that chapter.
Yesu vay, vathaila, kanaavirila padi.
In that chapter, in that verse.
Andh vathaila, andh vasnatle.
Every place you must see Jesus and Jesus.
Ellaa vathailu, ni yesu vai kanaavendu.
If you don't see.
Ni yesu vai kanaavitta.
Then we have to pray, repent for our sins.
Naam, apriyalan, jebithi, namde paavu vitha, manandrumavendu.
Once upon a time, there was a debate with the Ayubadiya Muslims.
Oru, oru, oru kalathile, oru vivaadam, andh bugamidhaliladu.
All the time, they were challenging.
Ellarume, avaga, oru savali vaitthargai.
And a Satrasta Jacob circle Mumbai.
Anga, pathirana Mumbaiindhavandhadi.
They were challenging every time to the Protestant and Catholic.
Anga, pathinana, anga, Roman Katholik protestinayum, avre savali vaitthargal.
They say, if Jesus is God shows, that Jesus is the Old Testament.
Appa, avar enna kadaana, yesu than devamandha, yesu vai palayarpandha kattunka.
Here, here, one of the preacher, he requested, please, can you just come?
Appa, ey, anga irundha varai, osagaru udiyakare, brothers chinde, nige varupidibandhu keta.
Because we cannot answer there.
Egulala badil solavamudiyavillai.
And all the preacher, they went calling me, Jesus only.
Ellarume, enne, only Jesus andu kuttukondurindharagai.
And they told us, so they are in the church, don't receive this fellow.
Avan ellaro Mumbai le soltanga, shindhe pasan samayla yataadike.
But when the debate came.
Adha, oru vivadam mandha pote.
Two years that debate was going on.
Endu varshupka vivadam pote.
Then, brother, one of the minister, Jabbar Abbulsteh.
Oru, oru agesu nekira, sagaran.
He requested me, brothers, please come and help us.
Kaj vaanga, the vivadutla, kudavi sainga.
And there, Doctor Jake, Doctor, Doctor, Muslim, Jaahir Sahib, Jakob.
Jakob, Jakob.
Doctor Jakob, indhu solugira, Islamiyar, parutiyam.
He was a staunch Muslim.
Oru biga, oru vairaki maane Muslim.
That time, Jaahir Hussain, Jaahir Nai, he was a new cadward, new scholar.
Jaahir Nai kira, kusolapadigira, oru vedavaa raachu, pudisaga, avan, aragga ganvatae.
At that time, this doctor said that you two, brothers, you show Jesus in the Old Testament.
And the doctor keta, palayyar parthi Yesu vaakami.
When it, blood was become very hot.
Ennaadu the sagar, bigu soo daaiter.
Because all the reverence and gold medalists in a creek and he put a dance.
Ebri paasayilu, grekka paasayilu, enna thangam medal vaagune, paala, udiya karu, naala padil solle mudiyaa.
I said, can I say, can I speak?
Nan solde, nan mesutuva.
Okay, listen, I stood with my Bible.
Nan vedate, kaiyil etukonde.
I told that man.
Nan adha manidare solde.
Doctor Razak.
Doctor Razak.
I said, Doctor Razak.
Doctor Razak.
Take this Bible.
The Bible etukonde.
Close your eyes.
Unkanna muri.
And open the Bible.
Vedate te, te.
Put your finger anywhere.
Unu diya, vedate.
If I will not show you Jesus in that place, I will keep this Bible, I will make a sunnah, I will make a circumcision, I will take up.
Appa, appa, ayen sonnara, ni, ni kanna muri, unkannu lai tirande, vedatla, enga venala, unu varala vai, ni varala vai kira vasanathala, na Yesu vaakami kila, na, na Muslim na variru.
And the spirit of the Lord was so strong upon me.
Enni, idhu devaavu, unu, unu.
I step by, I should take it.
Na solde, indha.
Open any place.
Eni, indha vasanathala vai.
By that challenge, he got trouble.
Ayen, ndha, naa puritha sagar, kudidara tolle paditthi.
When it, he did not take it.
Avan sagar, eechu kolavile.
Something God must be dealing with it.
Enna devan, unu, nekutukondu undha.
And then, after the, I told the other minister.
Nan mancha sagar, udiya karu, paachunne.
Do you believe that this is the word of God?
Niga, idhu devan, vaathayi, vistuva, sikriyila.
Because all they were against me.
Ellarame, idhu, edra, irkara.
Do you believe that this is the word of God?
Niga, devan, vaathayi, vistuva.
They said, yes.
Glory, glory.
We believe that this is the word of God.
Idhu devan, vaathayi, vistuva, sikriyila.
From Genesis to Revelation, it's word of God.
Appa, adhi amthandu, vellipantu solke, devan, vaathaya.
They said, yes.
Amma, unthata.
I said, if that is the word of God, in Genesis to Revelation.
Vellipantu visheshu, adhi amthandu, vellipantu visheshu, jaan, vaathayi, indha.
Hey, John chapter one said, in the beginning, what the world was made of.
Glory, glory, glory.
Avan, vannu solde, adhi la vaathayi, ndha, ndha vaathayi, dharu, ndha, ndha vaathayi, devanai.
And what is Jesus Christ?
And the vaathayi, tha Yesu kustu.
Brother, see God, God stopped the mouth of that Gola.
And the Goli, antik, vaai, devan, araita.
So, when it, the whole Bible is the revelation of Jesus Christ.
Uliu vedavum, Yesu kustu, vatiya, velliparayi.
I have a privilege to go to Washington DC.
Nan, vandhu Washington, nagarutukicayil.
Here, Brother Brian, where Brother Brian's photograph was kept.
Anga, enga, unnu tirgadashin, adha, kukaikala vai, kumutha.
In Washington DC, there is a big copper plate.
Washington nagarundu, oru periyavu, chappu thagundu.
And on that copper plate was just engraved, the Constitution of America.
Anga, America, enne, and the Iran, may, yada, puttu undhade.
And the Constitution, it has been read that in our English.
Adha, angirundu, elidu vai, thamna, paditthi.
And then, if you just go and read that one.
Adha, poi, padigala.
You can go and read that one, all it is English letter.
Ellarme, angirundu, elidu iruke.
You can read plainly, English language.
Ne, oru, angila, maridha, niga, padigala.
So, the God will tell you, sir.
And, balagavu, sonnara.
Don't read from there.
Niga, angirundu, padikada.
Yes, just go to the little distance.
Kaj duurandha, poi, padige.
And from there, you read.
Duurandha, poi, padi.
And then, what a wonder.
Enna, achariyam?
From here, you can read all the English letters.
Enga, siridu, duuratla, ellaa, angila, elidu, padigala.
But when you just go a little distance.
Kaj duurandhu, kumutha, yadu, tiri.
You cannot see any single letter of English.
Oru, chinnavattha, kuda, tiriyaadhe.
But on the big board, big that copper plate.
Adha, periyavu, chappu thagundu.
You can see the face, head of George Washington.
Adha, duurandha, santra, adha, yadu, George Washington, in mugatha, parkala.
That is the national father like our Gandhi Baba.
Adha, and the death, namakabiri Gandhi taatavo, and the death, the George Washington.
So, only you can see the face of George Washington.
Duurandha, poi, santra, George Washington, mugatha, parkala.
There is no, they cannot see the letters.
Oru, anga, duuratla, yadu, tiriyaadhe.
So, if we read our Bible.
Nam devan, uria, vaste, vaste.
Innocent spirit.
Nam devan, uria, vaathaya.
I believe that we will never see the letters, but we will see Jesus, and Jesus, and Jesus, and Jesus.
Nam, Bible, parika, aru, mittu, nam vaathayi, parika, vaanu, nam parku, minamalaa, Yesu, Yesu, Yesu.
Because Jesus Christ yesterday could have forever.
And Yesu tha, enthu, vindhu, vindhu, aru, aru.
And the Old Testament is Jesus.
And the palayyar partham, Yesu tha.
Two thousand years become, he was Jesus.
Endu varshutula, Yesu tha.
And this New Testament is Jesus.
In the periyavu, Yesu tha.
All, from all the book is been full of Jesus.
And the mudi vedam, Yesu vaakirathu.
So, that is a wonderful thing.
Adha, than, marathana, kariya.
We must thank the Lord for his grace, sending the prophet for us.
Nam, devan, uria, kirumayka, oru tirgadashi, adipidha, kaga, nandi, salta, venu.
If we will not see the word, the Lord Jesus Christ.
Nam, in the vedatla, Yesu kustuva, parka, mittu.
We need the Holy Spirit.
Ramake, pasuttha, unu, teve.
That we will see Jesus in every chapter.
Nam, ovar, adigaran, dulu, Yesu, vay, parka, venu, mittu, pasuttha, unu, teve.
Now, when it, he speaks about the revelation.
Anga, a vellipantu, vellipantu, rakasitthi, gurithi, besi.
Mystery of God.
Devan, i, guritha, rakasayam.
And Brother Brian comes and tried to explain this.
Idhai, namakabiri tirgadashi, vada, ki, tarabirugira.
I don't believe that Jesus only doctrine.
And naanu, yathu, besona, only Jesus doctrine, na, na, na.
I don't believe Trinity.
Naan, tirdu, thidu, nambo, thidile.
But unfortunately, many of the entire believers are being caught up into Jesus holy doctrine.
Avan, anega, kalisikala, visvasi, only Jesus, ubadesatla, chiki, kondu, irkara.
Most of them, they have been caught up into that doctrine.
Avan, kala, indha, ubadesatla, chiki, irkara.
Even they tried to just get scared of saying Father, Ser, and Holy.
Ah, anega, nargala, pidavakumara, pasuttha, unu, solugiru, kucha, padigala, akcha, padigala.
They get scared with that.
Adha, gurithi, pai, padigala.
Saint Paul is just giving the blessing to the Corinthians.
Anga, parke, anga, Corinthians, samithi, pavul, ebriyai, asir, vathte, kodukura.
Father love of God, the grace of Jesus Christ, and fellowship of the Holy Spirit.
Nambe, katraa, nambe, katraa, Yesu kustu, itkirumayu, pidavak, devan, uria, unbu, pasuttha, unu, rai, ke, venu, pavul, deri, vay, solu.
Why, in the end time, we don't do that?
Idhai, nam, kalisikala, chaidi, nekka, panu, thidile.
There we saw that Jesus, only Jesus, only.
Nam, yepo, thume, only Jesus, only Jesus, only Jesus.
This is team, that mystery is not been opened.
Enna, and the rakasayam, namakinnu, veli, agavile.
Oh, Jesus holy doctrine is wrong.
Ah, Yesu, oru, vare, engira, ubadesam, thavari.
That is Jesus, he is the second Adam.
Adha, Yesu, vay, renda, baadama, vaachu, rathu.
God created the man first, Adam.
Devan, manidara, mudalav, baadama, vaitha.
That was not an Adam only.
Appa, mudalav, baadama, vaitha, undhale, Adam, mattu, me, solapudi, ma.
Was there only Adam only?
Oru, vela, Adam, mattu, undhale, enne?
No, no.
Abhi, varadhe.
God made a man.
Devan, oru, manidara, visheshu.
God made a man.
Devan, oru, manchali.
When it, he was one man.
Avan, oru, manidhe.
Only one man.
Oru, manidhe, tham.
But when it, the mystery of Adam doesn't finish as over there.
Anga, Adam, gurtha, rakasayam, mudindu, pogirathu.
That is not the whole revelation.
Adha, oru, munamayana, rakasayam, alla.
There is something more revelation of Adam.
Adam, gustu, me, um, vellipadu, ulathu.
And God tried to just bring that revelation.
Adha, devan, vellipantu, padiyaa.
But put him in a deep sleep.
Devan, unu, oru, hayanda, nitray, kodaki.
Whatever it was hidden mystery, he pulled that one.
Avan, kodaki, parandu, ndha, rakasayatthi, veli, yadu, tha.
He pulled the bone, pulled the flesh.
Avan, avan, kulla, undhde, elumayu, avan, kulla, undhde, sadayu, veli, yadu, tha.
I don't know Adam's weight, how much it was, how many kilo he was.
Ah, avan, ewlava, enai, undhane, ewla, vaitha, undhane, tiriyaadha, Adam.
Maybe we can say that eighty kilo.
Oru, vela, eighty kilo, andhirkala.
It's okay.
Okay, thane.
Adam was eighty kilo.
Eighty kilo, aru, na, Adam.
Now, God had just put him to the deep sleep.
Devan, unu, hayanda, nitray, kodaki.
And to bring the mystery.
Avan, kulla, undhde, rakasayatthi, veli.
He didn't to bring the material now.
Epa, avan, kulla, undhde, oru, poru, edukunu.
He brought the bone.
Oru, avan, kulla, undhde, elum, eduttha.
How many, forty kilograms?
Oru, vela, oru, oru, kal, kilo, rukala, ma, oru, vil, elum, kal, kilo, rukala, ma.
One bone, one bone.
Oru, 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 elum.
And he brought the flesh also.
And, adhi, sutti, vai, kirtu, teveyana, a sadayu, kondu, vara.
And was that woman like a one kilo woman?
Oru, vela, oru, 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 kilo, saday, edutu, bhaara?
No, sir.
Illa.
How much material he removed?
Ewla, edutu, bhaara, avan, kulla, undhde, saday, undhde.
He removed so much material, I don't understand.
Enna, ewlava, ewlava, edutan, tiriyaadhe.
If Adam is eighty kilo.
Adam, eighty kilo, indha.
Then his wife should be sixty at least.
Hey, manevi, aru, di, kilo, ma, de, irkara.
Now, if sixty kilo has been removed from eighty.
Adam, lendha, aru, di, kilo, edutu, undha.
She becomes sixty kilo.
Avan, aru, di, kilo, agar.
And he down.
Adam, ewla, agar.
Only twenty kilo.
Vela, yarudhi, kilo, tha, agar.
That'll, understand.
Idhu, 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 unu, puri, ellae?
I want to tell you.
Nan, solle, thirugiru.
Even you can remove eighty kilo.
Ni, eighty kilo, vay, esthalu.
Still, he is eighty kilo.
Avan, eighty kilo, tha.
Our God is God.
Enna, devan, devan.
And even he brought the bread.
Avan, apothai, pitta.
And distributed it.
Adha, parimara, thoginna.
Still it is there.
Analu, anga, apo, irundu.
Where he was, that woman, widow, was pouring the oil.
Anga, parke, undha, pidavai, pidavadi, enne, poottina.
That crucible was very small.
And, oru, chinnakuppi, enne, mandhu, konjanda.
We don't put a drum for oil.
Adhu, mandhu, periyavu, drum, illa.
It was very small.
Oru, chinnai, enne, patra.
But she had brought all the big parts and small parts.
Akam, pakatla, undhde, periyavu, periyavu, patra, la, kondu.
And found that little crucible she was pouring.
Chinnai, enne, kuppi, lathu, ndhu, aravutra.
All big drums were full.
Ellaa, periyavu, periyavu, drum, la, nadi.
All cutters were full.
Ellaa, narigchi.
All these cutters were full.
Avan, kondu, undha, patra, la, nadi.
But still it was there.
Analu, kuppi, lathu, ndhu.
If that oil cannot be finished.
Enga, enne, tirundu, pogavile.
Then how our Jesus can finish?
Appa, Yesu, apri, tirundu, pogavudi.
After, how that Adam can be finished?
Appa, Adam, apri, avan, kurayindu, pogavudi.
Though, the material was removed to make a woman.
Avan, kulla, undhde, saday, elum, edukapattu, oru, pen, urvaka, patta.
Exactly, she was very fit for him.
Avan, ik, saday, ait, porundu, mudiyaa, ortiya?
Exactly.
Seera, it, porundu, mudiyaa.
Heavy little height, one inch, or two inch, or four inch.
Oru, vela, height, oru, one inch, rendu, churiva, rukala, ma.
But can you see?
Nan, parke, irukala.
So, Adam was not the Adam only.
Adam, Adam, attum, illa.
That was, that is a Jesus only doctrine.
Ah, Adam, tha, Yesu, oru, vare, rendu, ubadesam.
Then you ought to say that Adam only.
Appa, nam, Adam, urli, solnu.
Brothers, the God removed the mystery.
And, Adam, kulla, undhde, devan, rakasayatthi, veli, kodukura.
And the mystery.
And the rakasayam.
Whose mystery it is?
Adha, yar, uru, rakasayam?
The mystery of Adam.
Adha, Adam, in rakasayam?
The mystery of Adam.
Adha, Adam, in rakasayam?
So, this is also Adam.
Idha, Adam.
And the mystery came, that is also Adam.
Avan, kulla, undhde, undha, rakasayatthi, Adam.
So, we can see there are two parts.
Appa, Adam, in rakasayam, rendu, baga.
Oh, Adam, having got two parts.
Adam, Adam, rendu, baga, undu.
One is man, one is female.
Avan, kulla, undhde, rendu, baga, one, aan, and one, pen.
Don't say, this is man, and this is also man.
Eh, niga, apri, solle, mudiyadhe, idhu, oru, aan, idhu, oru, pen, irukala.
That is not the man.
Ah, idhu, oru, idhu, oru, aan, illa.
That is Christ.
Idhu, kustu.
But the Lord Jesus Christ.
Lord Jesus Christ.
Still he is on the throne.
Avan, sigaasutla, irkara.
Still he is in heaven.
Avan, innu, arvadu, thulai, irkara.
There, what it, what he brought.
Avan, enna, kondu, undha.
You will see, unfortunately, the devil is angry with us.
Yemal, ne, saathan, namala, poma, parke.
But I want to tell the devil, I am not going to stop preaching.
Amen.
Adha, avan, solugira, naan, prasangita, nirto, pogavile.
Amen.
I cannot stop preaching.
Naan, prasangipada, nirto, mudiyadhe.
Let him take the life and let him take the power.
Avan, ballabi, edukalantu, avan, karant, edutu, pogantu.
But God has given him the power.
Devan, ballabi, edutu, irkara.
So, when it, the mystery of God.
Devan, uria, rakasayatthi, gurithi, besi.
That is the most sublime mystery in the whole Bible.
Niga, om, magathana, oru, rakasayam, vay, ke.
When it, Jesus Christ said, what Jesus said?
Yesu, enna, sonnara.
He said, I am the wine.
Naane, draachak, kodhi.
Amen.
Amen.
John chapter fifty.
Amen.
Jovan, padanayi, draachachani.
Jesus said, I am the wine.
Naane, draachachani, undu, sonnara.
And ye are the branches.
Niga, kodigala, irkriyila.
That branch comes from the wine tree.
Draachachani, undhde, kodigala, varigathu.
That doesn't make another tree.
Adhu, vairu, chani, undhde, vara.
When the branch is coming.
Kodigala, varumbadhu.
Do you tell that, oh, two trees? No.
Appa, rendu, rendu, maravu, soluvingla?
No, no, that is not a second tree.
Adhu, renda, adhu, maravu, illa.
When the branch comes from the wine, or from the tree.
Draachachani, undhde, kodhi, varumbadhu.
It is the same tree.
Adhu, vare, maravu.
Only that branch is the extension of that tree.
And the chani, innor, thodachi, than, and the kodhi, aage.
So, Brother Brian told.
Adha, tirgadashi, sonnara.
There are seven churches, last church.
Yadu, sabay, kanna, mudivana, sabay, lavadikea.
When it, this bride is the extension of God had himself.
Nam, devan, tuvathin, thodachi, than, manavati, a, irkara.
God doesn't stop at Yahua.
Devan, yekavu, a, irpada, unu, nirthikala, vili.
He came down.
Avan, kila, vanda.
He had then become a Jesus Christ.
Avan, Yesu, kustuva, na.
Brother Brian said, that doesn't make two gods.
Adha, irundu, devan, kala, apavadile.
And after Jesus.
Yesu, kupinba.
From Jesus comes another bride.
Adha, Yesu, kulla, undhde, innor, kodhi, varigathu.
That doesn't make second law of third law.
Adhu, moonra, adhu, deva, apavadile.
It is the same law.
Adha, yade, devan.
It's the extension God had himself.
Adhu, devan, uria, devan, tuvathin, thodachi, than.
So, I will say that.
Naan, soluvan.
I don't have time to read now, cannot read.
Naan, nippadu, padimadarke, nairam, illa, taradu.
But the bride of Christ.
Kustuva, manavati.
Is the extension of God.
Amen.
Devan, uria, thodachi, a, devan, uria, manavati, irkara.
Because we are the word of his word, spirit of his word.
Nam, vaathayi, vaathayi, a, a, na, na, a, irkara.
If he is Jesus Christ, we are missing Jesus.
Avan, 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 tiru, Yesu, kustuva, irundha, naan, tirumadi, Yesu, kustuva, a, irkara.
Of the same material.
Oru, vare, oru, oru, poruttha.
Amen, Adam's wife was same material.
Adam, kulla, undhda, manevi, oru, paguttha.
Same thing.
Undru, tha.
Glory, glory, amen. Drink water. I am so happy. Drink water. Lord bless you. Drink water.
So, I hope that you understand.
Amen.
Niga, puri, kodukura, vissuva, sikri.
Altora.
Amen. So, what is the mystery of God?
Devan, uria, rakasayam, enne.
That is the top secret mystery.
Adhu, than, magathana, rakasayam.
And then, Brother Brian preached this message, so, is this the car?
Ah, ayen, me, idhuva, sabay, mena, chaidi, tirgadashi, prasangita, badhu.
When it, he was a, a, Adam ministry. Brother Brian had a ministry.
Ah, nam, puri, tirgadashi, oru, udiya, undhade.
Up to ninety sixty-two December.
Ailantun, arutran, December, ma, adu, varaila.
God had just blessed him with the two signs.
Avan, irundha, adiala, konda, udiya, thinaale, devan, asir, vaita.
That was his first full and second full ministry.
Adhu, than, mudalav, vildhu, renda, vildhu, rendu, than, udiya.
He was just hitting the sick.
Avan, anga, vedas, lai, sugamakki.
And besoning the mind.
Avan, irudhia, kila, paguttha, irundha.
He was revealing the secret of their heart.
Manidhara, irudhia, thirgadashikla, vellipantina.
But Brother Brian's ministry was not ended over there.
Avan, tirgadashin, udiyam, anga, nirtruvida, vili.
Because when it, both of those were just sent by the two signs.
Anga, anga, Bose, irundha, adiala, naada, arupapatta, badhu.
Just dropping the roar and becoming a soft, but that was not his ministry.
Adha, Bose, in udiyam, anga, avan, kuchia, porundu, badhu, avan, paam, baavu, badhu, paam, in, vaale, puripadu, alla.
Other putting ha, ha, on the dam and showing the people, that is not a ministry.
Adha, than, madikula, potti, and the kai, ven, kustu, baavu, badhu, vindu, porundu, badhu, uravu, badhu, alla.
His ministry was to bring the people out.
Avan, uria, udiyam, jana, kala, yekir, thilu, undu, veli, kodu, vara.
Brother Brian's ministry was not to show wonders and sign.
Brother, in udiyam, adiala, apudha, kala, magic show, kant, vallu.
His ministry was just bring the word to the bride.
Avan, uria, udiyam, vaathayi, manavati, kik, kodu, salva.
We know that it has sorries in the time.
Adha, nam, ayen, me, idhuva, sabay, mena, thulavu.
Brother Brian speaks about the dreamer's dream and seven one inch vision.
And, parke, avan, and the chaidi, la, sopra, kara, de, sopram, vachu, yala, tharskut, de, solugira.
When it, six dreamer's dreams speak the same thing. Yes, brother? All the rivers are the same.
Ellaa, sopra, kara, de, vundu, than.
And seven is a vision of Brother Brian's plot, and seven angels are coming.
Anga, parke, yala, tharskut, va, oru, periyavu, vadi, ponda, sattam, yala, tuudar, vay, vara.
They all are now dealing with each other.
Adhu, ellarme, one, oru, saraya, inay, pogavu, oru.
When it, that is the reason.
Adhu, than, karanam.
God planned for Brother Brian to go to the west.
Adhan, avan, devan, sagar, brannam, mai, mere, kuka, pogavu, mudiyaa, son.
Life from his birth.
Avan, uru.
Life from his birth.
Avarudhe vaale illa alla.
He was supposed to go to the west.
Avar devanale, merekukku challumadiyai.
Because for that cause only he was born.
Andha nokthir karanthan, navu kundha.
For what reason he was born?
Avar edarkaga pirunda.
He had a great ministry.
Avarudhi magathana Uliya biruthade.
Great ministry than, oh, than, than any prophet.
Meathatni endhatthirtashe parkram, magathana Uliya biruthade.
Great ministry than Moses.
Avar, Mosesai parkram, periyam Uliya.
Great ministry than Elijah himself.
Eliyave, akalathirndhe Eliyave, parkram, magathana Uliya.
Great ministry than talk about this.
Yovanshanagali parkram, magathana Uliya.
Brother sister, that is the reason.
Aduwe sadhurigale.
God, God sent him to the west.
Adanala than devanavari, merekukku kandipina.
With the dreamer's dream.
Andha sopranakarunu de sopranachile.
If we see fourth dream.
Adai parkram.
We have to see all the dreams are the same.
Ella sopranakalun onutthan.
Well, especially fourth dream.
Andha, andha andha de sopranachile.
Brother Bran told about sister Colin's dream.
Aange sister Colin's kurtu, brennam solugira.
And then whatever she saw, one of marriage place.
Avar, andha savari, oru tirumuna koodevai parkira.
And there was supposed to be a marriage.
Aange oru tirumuna narakameenidu irukkade.
Marriage is going to take place.
Aange tirumuna nadiyavu alladu.
And she saw in that one.
Andha savari thar parkranga.
That the bridegroom is come.
Manavalan mandu vittaa.
That bridegroom was so perfect.
Andha manavalan supera, siranam olvira irunda.
But there was a bride also.
Aange oru manavati irunda.
And he's, she said.
Andha savari solugira.
Bridegroom was perfect, but the bride was not perfect.
Manavalan paribhurnama irunda, manavati vathu saraya illa.
Though she was the bride.
Avar manavatiya irundha poodilu, siranam olivile illa.
Though she was the bride.
Avar manavati than.
Although she was the bride.
Avar manavati than.
She was not yet perfect.
Adanalu paribhurna padavada manavati.
I don't understand this message.
Good, good, good. Adu than, mey chaydiyae ulvakiyade.
Because we cannot be perfected.
Nam paribhurna manaya mudiyade.
When we speak about going and meeting the bridegroom.
Nam paribhurna adiyavade kurti sindika vittaa, epidi avare pogusam.
We are speaking about the marriage of the lamb.
Nam aati kutiyalare kalyanathu patti pesurao.
Then how Jesus can marry such kind of bride?
Av paribhurna padavada manavatiye, esamri tirumuna saiva.
Who is not the perfect?
Avay yaruv, yar perfectile.
And said poor sage.
Paul solugira.
He gave his life himself to the bride.
Avar tanudiyae jeevanay, manavatiyaka poruthathan solugira.
For the church.
Samay kaaga.
That he may receive a glorious church.
Avar magimayin, samayin, peruvadakaga.
Brother wanted an imperfect bride.
Avarke, oru paribhurna padavada manavatiyaka.
Brother sister, we can see there are so many shortcomings and failures in our life.
Naburi jeevigale, anegal, kurivgal, kuchagal irkalam.
And nobody is perfect.
Yaruv paribhurnu illa.
But in that condition.
Indha nilaiile.
Jesus Christ, our bridegroom is not going to get married to you.
Indha nilaiile nam irundhan, namudiya manavalanay esukistu, namay tirumunan saidu padavada.
That is the reason he says, you must be perfect.
Adanala than solugira, neegaluk siragirundu.
But in that dream she saw that she is not perfect.
Adal indai, indha sopranathira savari Collins, pride vada, manavati paribhurna padavile.
Bridegroom came very perfect.
Adal manavalan, oru paribhurnamaai vathar.
But the bride was not perfect.
Adal, aange nindu vandu tha manavati, porunna padavile.
Now how she will be perfected?
Epidi perfect, epidi porunna manaya mudiyum.
Brother sister, we know that what happened.
Savariya savariya naaitse.
That God Jesus Christ.
Katrani esukistu.
He said, our prophet Elijah to the west.
Anamudiyae thirukadashia yae brennamai, Eliyave, avar merekutisai kandipina.
I don't understand. Jesus Christ said he in the west.
Esukistu, brennamai, merekutisai kandipina.
And what happened over there?
Aange enna nadanji?
There was a blast.
Aange oru, periyam vedisaththam.
And brother Bran was lifted up.
Aange namudi thirukadashi, vaanathile eduthukalapatta.
When the seven angels they lifted up brother Bran.
Adai yala tuudarulum, avare naduvaanathu eduthukandavada vada.
What is that? When they, they brought him down.
Avare keela mindum kondavada vada.
And told him that go and preach seven seals.
Poy, yala muttragale prasangiyadu kattalay kodutha.
That material is for the bride to get perfection.
Adai, thanothame, manavati paribhurna manaya than.
That is the material.
Adu than poru.
That is the message.
Adu than chaydi.
Don't keep that message on the, on the, in the shelf, in the book.
Indha, thuputagalai chaydiye, namudi shelfla vayikirtukala.
Don't keep that message in the tapes and, and series.
Chuma tableyo, seriesyo vayikirtukala, message.
Don't keep that book in a shelf.
Thuputagalai shelfla vayka ninga.
If the angel told that eat that book.
Oru, vathu than, thasiruputadhe, vaangi pusiyadu sonna.
I would like to read the first page.
Naan mudalavu, pa- pa- pakathai padike virmugira.
Ah, this is very nice. I want to tear it and eat it.
Adal naladze, thal pakka, adu padike thinnadu mudiyuma.
Second page, reading that one or eating that one.
Endhaadu pakathai padikira, adayum pitchit thinnadu mudiyuma.
So when you read the message, when you, you must take it.
Neegal chaydiyae padikum vada, chaydin aalathai pettukalavendu.
Don't just read it and keep it like that.
Neegal padita mekila vaittuvittaa.
We must receive the message.
Padipaadala, andha chaydiyae, ulvagi kodu.
That is the material for us to prepare ourselves.
Nam aayatha paduvadarka, chaydiyae ulvavavendu.
That will prepare our life for the coming of the Lord.
Aduwe, namudi jeevigale, avarudhi, avar veyikaaga aayatha poruthu.
That material will dress you and me as a, for, for, for the marriage.
Indha chaydi than, namay, aati kutiyara kalyanathu kavastaro poruthu.
Amen.
Amen.
So why he went over there?
Avar yen, merekukku pogunavu.
Before going.
Pothu mindaga.
Oh, the dream said that she is not perfect.
Ella sopranakalun sonu, oru ekkariyam, manavati porunna padavile.
If she is not perfect.
Av manavati porunna padavile enna?
How she can get married?
Avam epidi kalyanathu porunna padavile.
That is the reason.
Atakarunam than.
Said our Elijah.
Devan namudiya Elijah re pathu sonna.
To bring the material for the bride.
Merekutisandre, tevayana porutkalai konduvaru vidiyai sonna.
Amen.
Nambe.
Oh, what is her event?
Edarkaga sandra?
She was not perfect, though she was a bride, but she was not perfect.
Manavatiya irundhu paribhurna padavada irunda, namakaga sandra.
She went to bring the material to bride. For her, for the bride, to, she become perfect.
Manavati aayatha paduvadarka, tevayana porunna padavu, tevayana porutkalai konduvaru avar sandra.
Yeah, that our messenger.
Namudiya chaydiyalan tharimaa?
He was our Elijah.
Avar than namudiya Elijah.
He brought the message.
Avar namakaga chaydi kodu.
And his message was so perfect.
Chaydi, avla paribhurnamaana chaydi.
Before the seas.
Yala muttragale mindaga.
That even brother Bran was not perfect.
Ye- ye- yen sonu, brennam guda porunna illi.
Our messenger was not perfect.
Avar, avar guda ellakariyala sarili.
But when he went to the west.
Adal, merekukku sandra vada.
To receive that message.
Andha chaydi, particular.
Brother Bran was changed.
Thirukadashium arina.
Totally changed.
Avarde subavamu mariyade.
He was looking different.
Avar vidyasamai kandapatta.
A very good.
A very good.
With a perfect message.
Avar magathana, porunamaana chaydiyavu.
So perfect message.
Saraya poruthu vidiyay chaydi.
Even John on the island of Patmos.
Aange, patputi ivila, yovan ekkunna.
John saw that angel.
Adal yovan, indha tuudanai, patputi mutasnada.
What if, if he fallen down in front of him?
Andha, indha tuudanudhiyakealathan, virudhi, padikukulla pona, yovan.
Why he fallen down?
Ye avan padikukundha.
Because the message was so perfect.
Indha tuudan kondu vandha chaydi, avla paribhurnamaana chaydi.
Yeah, that John thought that he is the bride.
Eena, adi pathu vudene, indha tuudan than, manavalan rendri yovanin.
John apostle, he thought, oh, this is my, this is my Lord Jesus.
Yovan apostle, tuudanai pathu, ivathan inudhi esukistu, endru sindikaraavu.
Real messenger will tell you the right thing. Really, real messenger will tell you.
Adal, unmayana chaydiyalan ummeyacholuva.
Oh, that is not big.
Avat solugathenna, naan esukistu illa.
She couldn't believe, he couldn't believe that.
Avad, eridhi, namavike mudiyum?
This unbelievable message so perfect.
Eena, athanai paribhurnamaana chaydiye, brennam vandu vada.
Brother Bran said.
Thirukadashi solugira.
Message on the island of Patmos was so perfect, John apostle couldn't believe that he is a man.
Andha chaydi, andha tuudan vandu vada chaydi, avla paribhurnamaan che, yovan, idai, adi, manidaraay irkavenda namavaila.
So who are that messenger?
Namudiyaadu, yarandha chaydiyara.
Who are that messenger?
Yarandha chaydiyara.
That is of the seventh angel.
Adi yala tuudan than.
Where did he go to? West.
Avar merekukku sandra vada.
Run the message.
Chaydi kodu vandha vada.
Fortunately, there is no light maybe tomorrow morning.
Adi naai kaali vandha namu thodanla.
Brother sister, we know that what happened, brother Bran was changed person.
Adi, avar, merekale endhu vandha vada, vingavu marcha potta oruvarai thirukadashivanda.
He was completely looking different.
Avar muchalavu vidyasamai kandapatta.
Totally looking different.
Avar muchalavu vidyasamai kandapatta.
Totally he was changed.
Avar, muchalavu balu patta varai irunda.
Then John thought that this is.
Yovan, idhi esukistu endru, sindikumaavuke, yala tuudan irunda.
There is no doubt in the entire message.
Namudiya, kalisikala chaydiyala endha sandeemu illa.
There are, there were so many, after they were bringing that, we'll have run with our Lord Jesus Christ.
Anegal vandhi, William Brennam than, namudiya esukistu endru, anegal riswachigiranga.
I told brother, that, that brother William William Thomas.
Enu Thomas pathu naan sonne.
I said, you are making a mistake.
Neevar thavari saigira endru sonne.
I said, no problem, John, John also had made a mistake, but he corrected.
Thomas, paari, unney polave, yovanu patmuthi ivila, avan thavari saigana, adanavan tanne thirtikundha endru sonna.
But again or again, you are saying, we'll have run with our Lord.
Adal, thirumi, thirumi, brennam namudiya andavaru endru solugira.
You must listen the messenger.
Neevu ungaava chaydiyae kaka vendu.
And that messenger is not Lord Jesus Christ.
Adupattu chaydiyalan esukistu illa.
But the revelation of Jesus Christ was so powerful.
Avar pulavai vandha, esukistu vay pancha velipari, avla vallamayai irundade.
He was the very apostle, he believed that this is Lord Jesus Christ.
Esuavu padagi yovan, ivathan, sindikumaavuke irundche.
So when brother Bran went to the west.
Namudi thirukadashim merekukku pogunavada.
He was manifested word. Amen.
Avar nirupattu, velipattu vattu.
Word was manifested.
Avar, velipattu vattu vattu.
And he became just like Jesus Christ, but he was not Jesus.
Avar, esukistu vay kola adan, adan brennam esukistu alla.
No sir.
Amen, illa.
It's a messenger.
Avar chaydiyalan than.
To bring the perfect message for, to, for the perfect bride, to, she must, she must come to the perfect.
Manavati paribhurna padipadiyane, oru paribhurnamaana, yala muttragale chaydiyakondu vandha.
When that through any other only, Rebecca received the perfection.
Aange, eliassar gudamai, konduvaru patta chaydiye, paribhurna chaydiye Rebecca langiritha.
All the material was given from Isaac.
Ella chaydiyume, Isaakin mulaamai, Isaakinanthandhu eliassar mulaamai.
Rebecca was not perfect.
Rebecca vandhu paribhurnu illa.
But when that Eliassar was given the material.
Adal eliassar karathile, andha porutkal koduka patta aruppa vandhade.
Her dress and her tiara, her veil, her shoes and sandals and whatnot, everything.
Avar aniavendi vastaram, avar aniavendi machcha urpadigal, avarikalanigal ellame, Isaakin mulaam, eliassar veliyai koduka patta.
Rebecca was, was a bride, but yet she was not perfect.
Aange Rebeccaal, manavati than, adanalu oru porunama, porunam illaavu la irunda.
But through Isaac.
Adal Isaakin mulaamai.
He that Eliassar was given everything.
Eliassar mulaamai ellam koduka patta.
Eliassar gave to the bride.
Eliassar, manavatiyake, Rebeccaal kodukan.
Unless we become perfect.
Nam indha, paribhurna manaya vittaa.
We cannot meet the Lord Jesus.
Esukistu vaidam sandikam mudiyade.
Brother sister, to study and to make a diagram and to preach from the point of view, okay, but in our life, something has to happen.
Nam padathai varainde, adai vilaiyati prasangiyavendu thandhe, prasangiyavandhu saritan, namudiya jeevam saraya thandha.
When brother Bran was just gone.
Andha, thirukadashipola vandhage.
Seven angels they came over there.
Aange, yala thudaragange vandhage.
I had a privilege to just see that place.
Andha idantai parku madiyana vayipina.
Stand on that same rock where brother Bran is standing.
Thirukadashi nindra, aday parain meethu naanu nindra.
Stand on that mountain where seven angels lifted him up.
Yala tuudan oru, vaanathu kiduthukundha arule, aday malayla naan nindha.
These seven angels they came.
The yala tuudan vandharule.
They lifted up brother Bran.
Avar, thirukadashia meela irutha arugel.
But when that, there are so many different, different interpretation of this cloud.
Indha meghathai kurithe, vidyasamana viddakkalirukkade.
But this afternoon, brother Ruben brought a wonderful thing.
Indha matyana velaile, paascha Ruben, oru nalavu, oru arugyanakadithu kodu vandha.
I'm happy for that.
Edarkaga naan sandoshapadigare.
Yes, I would like to read some of the thing, what is that one?
Adi, endha vendu, orisala karivayana padike virmugire.
Can I see the light?
Ah.
Now you see, brother Bran is speaking from the Christ in the mystery of God.
Kristu devanudhi, parabragasithin melipattal endru chaydiyile.
Don't, don't make a mistake about this cloud.
Indha meghathai kurithe, oru thavaran apiprayade, kairpatti kodu vendha.
I will repeat.
Naan marupidiyase solugire.
Because after my preaching, there will be so many reaction action.
Naan chaydi unitha parake, narayya edir, edir, edir varam.
But I don't care.
Naan adikundu kavala padavada illa.
I want to just say, whatever the prophet said.
Thirukadashi edai sonnado, aday naanu solugirugire.
What brother Bran is saying over there in the Christ in the mystery of God.
Indha chaydiyile, thirukadashenadu solugira.
Two zero five.
Yarmukthi anja patthiile.
The coming of the Lord is in a mystery.
Adanuvudiya varugai, oru ragasyama irukkade.
It is a mysterious coming.
Adu oru, oru manmamaana varugai.
How? What is the mystery of his coming?
Avarudhi, vahathavargayin ragasya minna.
We don't know where he is coming.
Avar epadu varugiraa endru thariyade.
How he is coming?
Epidi varugiraa endru thariyade.
We know that he is coming.
Adal, avar varugiraa endru kandipa thariyum.
And so was all the mysteries of God, waiting for this last day.
Adu than, ellaa ragasyavulu, devan varugirandha naanuka kathirukkade.
That what he has done.
Adai than avas chaydiyurkara.
Is what Jesus Christ has done.
Adu than esukistu chaydiyurkara.
We know that what he has done.
Avar enna chaydiyurkara?
To obtain the bride, perfect bride.
Oru paribhurnamaana manavatiyaper.
He came from heaven to earth.
Avar, vaanathil vandhu buumikvandha.
And he gave sacrifice.
Avar, oru baliyay koduthaan.
He paid the price.
Avar kiriyathisantina.
He, he opted to obtain the bride of Christ.
Manavatiyay mindum, meetu kodu.
Brother sister, you see, what he is saying.
Avar enna solugira, kavunige.
What he has done.
Avar enna kaniyurkara?
He never gave his mystery in full.
Avar, namudiya ragasyathai epadum, ulumiyay tandadilai.
But now this is a full mystery.
Adal, iduva, mehdu, oru ulumiyana ragasya.
And waiting, opening the full mystery.
Iduva, ulumiyana ragasyathai tharundukodukamudiyade.
In a time of John Wesley.
Aange, John Wesley.
In a time of Martin Luther.
Martin Luther kaalathile.
The full mystery was not given.
Ulumiyane, uh, ulumiyana ragasya velipadavile.
Was in a part.
Adu pagdi pagdiyai tharupattade.
Was in a part and part.
Adu pagdi pagdiyai tharupattade.
But comparing to this seven seal.
Adal, yala muttragaladu oppidum vada.
He said, what happened?
Endha achi.
Martin Luther's time little mystery.
Aange, maagri Martin Luther gudamai sirudhu.
John Wesley's time little gradually.
Aange, avan thodachiaga, John Wesley sirudhu.
But in the last days.
Kanasin naalkaliile.
The reason that was such a tremendous time.
Oru magathana nairam undhaliku.
That he spoke it here and showed those seven thunders.
Adal, inga pesapattu vadiya, yala idimulakangal, kandikavattade.
He showed the seven thunders.
Avar yala idimulakangalay kandhittha.
He shone.
Avar kandhittha.
Hallelujah. What he said? He shone the seven thunders.
Avar yala idimulakangalay kandhittha.
Seven.
Hallelujah.
Seven thunders are not seven virtues.
Aange, yala idimulakangal, yala karpin karivagala.
But any of, God bless them too.
Ye, anya, kapidindha devanavale asuradi kattu.
What is, now try to listen.
Avgal, samikodu ka marukuravgal.
He has shown these seven, they are those seven thunders.
Avar yala idimulakangalay, the meghathai vayla kandhittha.
And he is saying, see, look at Life magazine.
Neegal, andha, Life magazine la vandha, andha bugaypadathai parugel.
Life magazine then passed that circle of cloud on the line there.
Aange, andha Life magazine anadu, andha meghathiru, meghathirundhu vandha velichathiru bugaypanam.
They couldn't understand, no one could understand.
Yaruv mey adikurithukalavadiyavillai.
Don't know what, don't know it yet.
Adi innu yaruv ariyamudiyavillai.
But yeah, then he go there and went for those mysteries, mysteries to be revealed.
Adal angayakoy, thirukadashiga niraveeduvadaka, kathirukkade.
And he said, do you see the picture?
Neegal indha padathai pakrikila?
What is that picture?
Adal padabenna?
We will read that one.
Apadikila?
Just to cut lips mid.
Avakonjo, inu kura adu, inu thirukamaga.
It is right here in the picture.
Indha padathile.
Just exactly months before it happened.
Palapadukal, idha nadeparuvadaka mindaga.
And told, told here that.
Ah, solupattade.
He is going to bring the body of the believers together to reveal it.
Adai, thakondu vandhu, sariramagya viswashigale, velipaduthu vade devanin nokka.
To bring the body of the believers.
Viswashigali, utthathai velipadutha.
What is that one? That is not the second coming of the Lord.
Idhi, adarudhiyare ndam varugai illa.
They see the body of the believers.
Idhi. Kristuvin, and, and sariramagya viswashigale.
Who's body? The bride's body.
Yarundha sariram, neegalun naanudha sariram.
All, the whole bride is over here.
Idhi, suttiyilpudhe ellam, devanale, munkurikam patta manavati.
This is not a man Adam.
Idhu oru, oru manidha adam alla.
Our second Adam is sitting on the throne.
Enndha namudiya rendham adam, singasanta abandharkara.
But this is also Adam, but this is a female.
Adal idhuva adam tha, adal idhi, adamilinda penbaga.
She is the bride, the bride of the believers.
Idhi, adamilinda penbaga magya, Kristuvin, sariramagya, viswashigale aagya manavati.
This is the female part.
Idhi, adamilinda.